Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Siomo.
Present.
Counselor Conley.
Present.
Counselor Consavo.
Present.
Counselor Jackson.
Present.
Counselor Lamatina.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Presley.
Present.
Counselor Ross.
Present.
And Counselor Yancey. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
I'm informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I'd ask all in attendance to please rise as I have the intro- in the honor of introducing City Councilor Tito Jackson, who will introduce Pastor Gina Casey to deliver today's invocation. After Pastor Casey delivers today's invocation, I would ask all to remain standing as Counselor Jackson leads us in a salute to the flag. City Councilor Tito Jackson. Thank you, President Murphy. I am honored today to share with you an amazing pastor in our district. I was made aware of her amazingness by one of my amazing constituents, Tony Brewer, who we all know and love as one of the quietest constituents that any of us have. Pastor Gina Casey is the senior pastor at Columbus Ave. AME Zion Church in Boston's South End neighborhood. Originally from California, Pastor Casey comes to us here in Boston from sunny Arizona, where she was pastor of Fisher Chapel AME Zion Church for 15 years. It was there the members of the church often recall her warm compassion for individuals and their spiritual growth, and her care for the surrounding community. The daughter of an ordained Baptist preacher, Pastor Casey studied at Howard University, AKA the Real HU, and married before answering the call to ministry in the 1980s. She studied theology at Fuller Theological Seminary and assumed her current pastoral position in July 2010. We are lucky to have her here in this great city and welcome her to the Boston City Council today. Thank you.
The psalmist David wrote thousands of years ago these words, "How good and how pleasant it is when brothers and sisters dwell together in unity." Although David was referring to the nation of Israel back then, I believe that his exhortation is relevant for today. As you prepare to serve this great historic Boston metropolis, I urge you to do so in the true spirit of unity, and it is in that spirit that I offer this prayer. Let us pray. God of glory, peace, and love. We first thank you for the grace and the blessings that you have provided this great city. Thank you for the results of recent elections. Thank you for the results that indicate the positive progression and forward movement of this city and state, results that offer hope for the present, and results that open the doors for continuous improvement. It is my sincerest prayer that you would fill the heart of each official, elected and appointed, with a spirit of unity, a unity that checks egos and personal agendas at the door, a unity that encourages one another despite differences, and in fact embraces differences, realizing that it's our differences that help us to be more beautiful. We appreciate what you have done and what you're going to do during this session. As the gains are being celebrated, help us to be ever mindful that the statistics for violence in our communities are still too high, and our economic statistics are still too low for us to ignore them. So help us to embrace the call to unity, that we may work together to glorify you and to do what is needed for this great incredible community. May the unity evidenced by the commitment, cooperation, and collaboration of these city council persons inspire unity in the communities that they represent, that this will continue to be a legacy that is built upon your grace and your mercy, and that our children and our grandchildren will be able to glorify you as they walk together in love and peace. We ask for these things in our precious Savior's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Casey, for your inspiring words. Please join us as Counselor Jackson leads us in a pledge of allegiance.
I have the pledge of allegiance. From the United States of America, and to the God of all who stands, on a nation, on your God, individual, the learning, and the justice of all.
Counselor Jackson will escort clergy. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes from the last meeting stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections or corrections, the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, communications from his honor, the mayor.
Docket number 1842, message in order authorizing the Environment Department to accept and expend $170,000 in the form of a grant, 2014 Climate Action Plan Update awarded by the Bar Foundation, to be administered by the City of Boston's Environment Department.
Docket 1842, we refer to the Committee on Environment and Human Rights. Madam Clerk, we have a presentation. The chair is in error. Can I call upon Counselor Baker? Come forward. And is it Kaye?
Hiya.
Kaia Rose. And I'll turn the podium over to Counselor Baker at this time.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Last year, John Conley, Counselor Conley, asked me to get involved in this toy drive because Kaia is from my district, so I appreciate John thinking of me there. Kaia Rose Sukanen Andrew is from Dorchester and is a second grader at the William Trotter Elementary. Kaia is here with her brother, Keston. Her mom, Dana, and her grandmother, Judy, to receive toys collected by the City Council offices for the Kaia Rose Annual Toy Drive. Kaia was diagnosed with a cancerous blood disorder in 2011 and receives treatment at the Tufts Pediatric Hematology Cancer Center. Three years ago, Kaia asked her mom to help her collect toys for her friends at the Tufts who are not able to be home for the holidays. The Kaia Rose Annual Toy Drive was born. I'm proud to join Kaia and her family for the second year in collecting toys to brighten the holidays for brave children and their families who are battling illness here in our city. We greatly appreciate their leadership in providing us with the opportunity to participate in this wonderful effort. This past weekend, we had a toy drive at Florian Hall. It was quite a reception. We had probably 300 people there, and part of those toys, I brought Kaia up on the stage with me so she could introduce herself, and I think she might be in this chamber here in about 20 years or so. She got in front of the 300 people, took the mic, introduced herself, thanked everybody, and it was quite a scene. Special little girl right here, and I just want to let her, would you like to say something? Oh, she has a speech all prepared. There you go.
I want to help with the trash.
Do you want the gavel?
No, I'm not a judge. I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. This toy drive means so much to me, and your support and donations, I'm really grateful for them. This is my third annual toy drive. I'm a survivor. This toy drive survives with your help. Thank you very much to Counselor John Conley, and Counselor Frank Baker, and all the other city councilors and their staffs.
and disperse these toys. Thank you.
Thank you to Counselor Baker and in his absence, Counselor John Conley, for sharing Kaia with the City Council in the City of Boston. She's an amazing young woman. She's a leader now, should be a leader in the future, but she's a leader right now. Congratulations to her. Madam Clerk, back to business at hand. Docket 1843.
Docket 1843, message in order authorizing the Commissioner of Parks and Recreation Department to accept and extend a capital grant of $400,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Environmental Affairs for Communities PARC program for improvement to Low Presty Park located in the neighborhood of East Boston.
Docket 1843 will be referred to Committee on City and Neighborhood Services.
Docket number 1844, message in order authorizing the Department of Neighborhood Development to apply for, accept, and expend $400,000 from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, known as the EPA, Brownfields Assessment Grant Funds, to carry out environmental assessments activities on properties owned by local government.
Docket 1844 will be referred to Committee on Environment and Human Rights. Reports of public officers and others.
Docket number 1845, communication was received from the mayor, I'm sorry, was received from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division regarding the Silver Line Gateway Project.
Docket 1845 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1846, communication was received from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Region One FEMA, regarding preliminary flood insurance rate maps, known as FIRM, and preliminary flood insurance study, known as FIS, reports of Suffolk County, Massachusetts.
Docket 1846 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1847, notices received from the mayor of the appointment of Ann Leany Terranova, I'm sorry, as a member of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission, replacing Brent Legs, who resigned, for a term expiring May 1, 2014.
Docket 1847 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1848, communication was received from the city clerk transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for City Council action on the designation of the Q. Wright House, 24 Grandian Way, Dorchester, as a landmark, in effect after January 6, 2014, if not acted upon.
Docket 1848 will be referred to Committee on Economic Development and Planning.
Docket number 1849, communication was received from the mayor of his withdrawal of docket number 1596, which was a message in ordinance amending the City of Boston Code ordinances, Chapter 6-8, municipal depositories.
Docket 1849 will be placed on file. Reports of committees.
Docket number 1794, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on November 20, 2013. Docket number 1794, message in order approving appropriation of $4,137,330 for the purpose of paying costs of a feasibility study and schematic design work associated with the construction of the Joseph Josiah Quincy Upper Schools/Boston Arts Academy, projected to be located at Parcel 25 in Chinatown, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass to be read once and assigned for further action.
Chair recognizes City Councilor Mark Siomo on docket 1794. May the third time be a charm.
This should be familiar. So this order requests for the appropriation of $4,137,333 for the purpose of paying the cost of a feasibility study and schematic design work for the proposed construction of the combined Quincy Upper School/Boston Arts Academy on Parcel 25 near Salt Station. We held a hearing, the Committee on Ways and Means held a hearing on October 29 under the previous order, docket number 1599. Since that time, that docket has been withdrawn, and before you is a new docket. We heard testimony on the October 29 committee hearing from Mike Galvin, from Chief of Property and Construction Management, Joe Mulligan, the Deputy Director, Carlton Jones from Boston Public Schools, Director of Capital and Facilities Management, and the Principal Bach Fun Wong from the Quincy School, and Michael Kontopasus. The school would serve a total of 1,360 students. Both schools have worked extensively with the Mass School Building Authority in advance of this, and the funding and anticipated reimbursement is around 74%, resulting in a cost to the city of just under $1 million. The funding requested will enable BPS and the School Building Authority to assess the feasibility of a downtown Boston high school, and so this is just the first step. This appropriation requires two votes, two weeks apart. This is the final opportunity to move forward with this appropriation, this legislative session. So as the chairman of Ways and Means, I recommend docket 1794 be read for the first time and assigned for further action. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo. Chair recognizes Counselor Mike Ross.
Thank you, Mr. President. Some of my colleagues may have heard the quote by Rabbi Hillel that said, "If I'm not for myself, who will be for me? If I'm only for myself, what am I?" Or, more succinctly said, by our own Sal Amatina, "When all give, all gain." Rabbi Hillel, Sal Amatina, at the same meaning certainly and spirit with those quotes. And that spirit of all giving and all gaining has been a hallmark of this council for as long as I can remember serving on it, now for the last 14 years. It was not present, though, however, in this transaction. Two years ago, three school communities were pitted against each other, and the success of one was dependent on the failure of another. And it was difficult for the school community, who was dragged through that process, which today Superintendent McDonough calls a mistake, a process of a mistake that led to an inadequate facilities plan. And it wasn't fair to those who lost. And it was particularly unfair when, one year later, or 17 months later, it proved to be not a plan at all, but actually a complete 180, that no one had to have moved originally. And no one was willing to apologize for that, and no one was willing to even call it a mistake. But it was. And up until just a few hours ago, a couple days ago, that was the plan that was going to move forward, that one school community was going to succeed at the expense of, in this case now, a neighborhood. And I just refuse to believe that that's how good public policy operates. To me, good public policy is not a zero-sum game. It's this notion of all giving and all gaining. And when we do that, we succeed. Thankfully, and I want to particularly thank my colleagues who stood with me, Counselor Presley, O'Malley, Jackson, Baker, and Arroyo. Thankfully, that pressure caused all to gain. And Superintendent McDonough, who is a principled leader and doing a great job, provided a letter that I'll ask the messenger to hand to my colleagues, which essentially says that he is going to, and he's communicated with Mayor Manino, and he communicated with Mayor Alec Walsh, he is going to recommend an external process for citing schools moving forward, believing that the credibility of the school department itself could not deliver kind of what an external player could, and that, in particular, two things. One, he acknowledges the unique pressures that the Mission Hill neighborhood are under, not just from the loss of the Farragut and from the loss of the Mission K-8, but also the fact that it has pressures from institutions, both medical and higher education, that are making it harder to raise a family. And he specifically is tasking that external process to help identify an elementary school in the Mission Hill community, number one. And number two, something that Counselor Conley said at the last meeting, the Tobin Elementary School, K-8, is a proud school. That is a Level III school. And like the other 60-plus Level III schools that are out there, it's struggling, and it needs our support. With more than half of its population ELL learners, it needs more direct engagement with its parents. And so in addition to some of the things that the superintendent crafted in his letter of what is happening at the Tobin, he is now going to reopen the parent engagement center that had closed at the Tobin, which will be critical to allowing parents to make that school better and be more engaged in that school. These, I believe, are critical enhancements to the community I serve, and I'm pleased that we are able to do two good things: support that community, but also support a vision that has been in the works for many years, of the arts community, and of the BAA community, and of the Quincy Upper communities, and be able to support that, because that will require a heavy lift, too. And this is just the beginning of that effort, but it's one I have always supported, and it's one that today I'm proud to stand and support with my colleagues, given that today I believe we will all gain. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Ross. Chair recognizes Counselor Bill Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to commend the previous speaker, both for his engagement of this particular initiative that's in front of us, and for his diligence in support of his community in the district that he represents. So I'm here to also say that I fully support this matter before us, and would like to see it move forward for a second reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan. Chair recognizes Counselor Charles Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And we're going for a first reading on this matter today. Mr. President, I'm going to reiterate what I've stated so many times in the past. This whole process has been riffed with contradictions. Back in June of 2013, I know it seems so long ago to those of us who just went through grueling reelection campaign, in some cases more than one, it seems like a long time ago, but in June of 2013, we received the communications from the administration, the school department, saying that the City of Boston would not afford to invest in another high school. Basically, they said, "We didn't need a high school." And, Mr. President, you know, that was in response to a pending loan order that was before us, calling for the investment of $115 million to build a high school on the college campus-like grounds of the former Boston State Hospital site. And year after year after year, as you know, Mr. President, I've been seeking support of this body in response to more than- of this body in response to more than 3,000 people in the city of Boston who asked that we build a new high school on grounds which were set aside specifically to build a new high school in the city of Boston. Fifteen acres of land, and the price tag, according to the administration, would have been $115 million. The Chair of the Ways and Means Committee back in June said that we didn't need a new high school, didn't need, that we have surplus high school seats, using the argument of the administration. And what they characterize as high school seats are precisely the seats in the, like what we have in the Quincy Upper School, building that was constructed in 1911, opened as the Abraham Lincoln Elementary School, which was grossly inappropriate for our high school students, and I stated that time after time, year after year. It also included the seats at 174 Ipswich Street, which currently houses Fenway High and the Boston Arts Academy, and used to be the site of the Boston Latin Academy, where my second son graduated from, I believe, back in 1991. Very inappropriate building, lacked facilities, that all high school students in the state of Massachusetts should take for granted. So I find it very, well, ironic, really, that today we're being asked to vote on a loan order of admittedly a relatively small amount in the scheme of things, a little more than $4 million for a feasibility study. But what we've learned in each of the previous hearings on this topic, the projected cost of this building would be $266 million, more than double what it would have cost to build a high school on the grounds of the Boston State Hospital site to service all students. So I asked, well, how many acres of land are involved in this new project? And I was told, one acre. Now, Mr. President, you know it takes more than one acre to provide a high school facility that includes athletic facilities, including outdoor facilities, track facilities, et cetera. So we have, on the one hand, a project that's going to be built on one acre of land for $266 million. On the other hand, we have 15 acres of land to build a state-of-the-art high school for $115 million. And time after time after time, that project has been shut down, and as recently as June of this year, we were told by the administration and the school department that investing in a new high school at this time would be a poor use of the public's dollar. Well, of course, I expressed outrage when we received that communications, and I repeat that outrage, because our students deserve first-class facilities. And we do have some history with regards to high-rise high school buildings. Before any of us were elected to the city council, we had a high-rise high school building located opposite the Boston Latin School. It was the site of Boston English. And one of the reasons that building was closed was because we were told, or the previous councilors and mayors were told, that it was simply unworkable to have a high-rise high school facility and provide the type of consistent education that's required. So I put all that on the record, Mr. President, because I'm once again asking, in this case, the incoming administration, to take a serious look about having a thoughtful facilities plan. The plan to build a high school in the previous administrations was based on the last comprehensive plan that was put together in 1996, called for by Mayor Menino. So I'm asking that we do this in a very thoughtful manner. However, what's before us today is not the financing of $266 million, it's to provide an expenditure for a study, a feasibility study, along with some design to justify the study. I am not going to oppose that, Mr. President. I have advocated more than anyone else on this body for the construction of new high schools in the city of Boston. So I'm not going to stand in the way of this proposal. However, I will call upon the next administration to take a serious look at a comprehensive facilities plan, equivalent to what was done in 1996, so that we can, at long last, come up with a very prudent use of the city's resources. And by your vote today, you are contradicting, but the administration has told us, in June of this year, saying that we did not need to build a new high school. It's the administration that's also contradicting that. So I welcome the fact that, at long last, the administration is agreeing with me that we need to build a new high school. I don't agree necessarily that this is the best location. In fact, I have many concerns about traffic, many concerns about our ability to provide an outdoor track facility, and other things that high school students should be able to take for granted, especially if we're going to build a new state-of-the-art facility. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Yancey. Chair recognizes Councilor Tito Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise, just to put this in context, I think Councilor Yancey, as well as Councilor Ross, spoke eloquently about why we are here today and why it took so long. But I just want to go back to that point. We are over $500 million behind in repairs and deferred maintenance in our schools, and we are contemplating a $260 million expenditure. The folks who are viewing us here have budgets, and they have to determine what the priorities are in their budgets. And I think the Boston Public School Department has to do the same thing. This is, this shows a need for really a comprehensive facilities plan. And the fact that we're moving towards neighborhood-based schools, we need to stop and actually ask ourselves, where do children live in the city of Boston? Where are the highest concentrations of young people, and where are those concentrations growing? And also, where do we have schools? Because had we had a comprehensive facilities plan, Mr. President, we may not have closed the 11 schools that were closed two years ago. Up until 2004, Boston had an opportunity, under the classification of desegregation cities, to get 90 percent reimbursement, 90 percent reimbursement. And we saw many of our fellow municipalities take advantage of that and redo almost all of their facilities. We haven't, I believe, performed at the level that we should have for our young people. We are now in Roxbury, going to be moving forward, thanks to the School Building Authority and Treasure Grossman, with the Dearborn moving forward, and a STEM academy in Roxbury, which is a great thing, but that building was built in 1912, Mr. President. I am going to be supporting this feasibility study today. I do think, and I hope what comes out of this feasibility study, is looking at the future of where young people live in the city of Boston. Where do we need new schools? And what areas in the city of Boston have the highest concentrations of young people? I think it is incumbent upon this body, as well as the Boston Public Schools, to step forward and stop piecemealing this. You know, we're talking about $14 million over in Mission Hill for the K-8, $260 million here, $50 million here. All of this needs to be put in the context of where and how our young people would be best educated. So I will be supporting this today, but I think, and I do need to make a distinction, that, again, as Councilor Yancey noted, what we're looking at is feasibility today. We're not voting on a $260 million building, but we're voting on the feasibility of this option. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Chair recognizes Councilor Ayanna Pressley.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Boston Arts Academy and the Desire Quincy School, our school community is practically bursting at the seams. These students deserve to be in spaces that are appropriate for their learning and conducive to their success. I don't want to stand in the way of that process. I won't, which is why I'll be voting to approve this feasibility study. But I do think, for as long, I don't want to stand in the way of that process, for as long as we continue to proceed in this way, in this piecemeal fashion, ultimately we are standing in the way of real progress. This unenviable and completely avoidable quagmire that myself and my colleagues continue to be put in, pitting school community against school community, forcing us to make decisions that will feed and nurture one community to the deprivation of another, is unfair and unavoidable. So once again, echoing the articulate sentiments of my esteemed colleagues, I'm renewing my call for BPS to provide us with a comprehensive, updated facilities master plan, which is not just a strategy about repairing and upgrading facilities across the system. It's about addressing the growth in the early grades, the progression of empty seats in our high school grades. We cannot continue to piecemeal proposals that close or move schools and disturb school communities and families. These aren't just numbers we're shifting around on the page, these are real people and lives that are being impacted. So we need a long-range plan that addresses the demographic shifts occurring in BPS over the next several years. Throughout the school reassignment reform process, you know, what is the single thing that we have heard repeatedly from parents and families is that they want predictability? Well, they deserve that. And I, for one, believe as partners in fiscal stewardship, which is what myself and all of my colleagues are, and as a policymaker, that we also deserve that level of predictability. And so I hope that we'll be seeing very soon a comprehensive facilities plan. But again, it's, you know, my honor to serve with all my colleagues, very eloquent words by Councilor Ross, and I'm looking forward to voting in support of this feasibility study and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Pressley. Chair recognizes Councilor Felix Arroyo.
I rise today to say that I'll be supporting the feasibility study today. You know, it's funny, these school moves, to see how personal it gets and how small Boston is. Two years ago, when we were talking about the Mission Hill School, it's a school my brother went to, a school I would visit often when he was doing school activities there. And so I understood what was happening to that community, because our family felt very much as if they were part of that community. And here we talk about Boston Arts Academy, that same brother went to Boston Arts Academy, you know, and it's a building that, the Ipswich Street, in fact, my older sister went there when it was Latin Academy, and I know that building intimately. And we talk about Quincy Upper, and I see in the audience Dr. Bach Fun Wong, who was my mom's last boss, if anyone can say they were my mom's boss in their entire time that she worked, because she worked at the Quincy Upper School up until she retired very recently. And so I know these buildings intimately. While I'm not prepared to tell you that the Ipswich Street building cannot serve as education facility, in fact, I believe it can, I don't believe it works for the Boston Arts Academy. They've been performing miracles with a space that wasn't built for what they do. You know, and when I used to go visit my brothers in the theater program, and you would go to their theater at the Boston Arts Academy, you knew very much that you were just sitting in a room that looked like a box. And somehow those students pulled it off, and it made you believe you were someplace else. But it was in spite of the space, not because of the space. And so because of that, I'm thrilled to support the idea of Boston Arts Academy getting something that fits what that school is. It's a treasure in our city, a real treasure. And while we have to improve the schools that aren't doing well, we most certainly have to support those that are, and not allow their success to be reasons to not do what's right by them. And so I think that's what we're doing today for the Boston Arts Academy. By the Quincy Upper, you know, we all know we have problems with our district high schools. This is no secret, this is no surprise. In fact, in the Merrill campaign, both of the two finalists spoke extensively about the need to really reform what's happening in our high schools. None of them said the Quincy Upper was a problem, but that, again, that's in spite of the facilities they had, not because of the facilities that they had. And so I think we have an opportunity now to take two very high-performing schools to do great things, and allow for those students to really see the potential, allow for the staff there to really have what they need when we support this move. So that's why I'll be supporting it. I will say I'm saddened that it looks as though, in the Fenway neighborhood, they'll have no school. And I don't know if that's something for the new mayor to look at. In fact, probably is. You know, but we, as a council, you guys will be here as councils, many of you will be, I won't be. And I hope that we really think about what services we're providing every neighborhood moving forward as we do this work. And as your constituent, I'll be looking for that myself. So as I stand here saying I'll be supporting this effort, I want to say something through the chair to the District Four City Councilor, who's a good friend of mine and a colleague, I continue to support the idea of a high school in Matapan. I was proud to always support those votes when they came up. I don't see this vote as in contradiction of that on my end, and will continue to be a supporter of the efforts to have a high school in Matapan. I think you're right. And I think that it's, hopefully soon, we'll see that happen. So thank you for the time, and I appreciate that. And thank you to everyone involved to get to this resolution and to get to a place where at least I know I feel very good about the vote that I'm be casting today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Arroyo. At this time, Councilor Ciomo moves acceptance of the committee report and passage, first reading of the capital loan order of $4,137,000. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Arroyo.
Yes.
Councilor Arroyo, yes. Councilor Baker.
Yes.
Councilor Baker, yes. Councilor Ciomo. Councilor Ciomo, yes. Councilor Conley. Councilor Consavo. Councilor Consavo, yes. Councilor Jackson. Councilor Jackson, yes. Councilor Lamatina.
Yes.
Councilor Lamatina, yes. Councilor Linehan.
Yes.
Councilor Linehan, yes. Councilor Murphy.
Yes.
Councilor Murphy, yes. Councilor O'Malley.
Yes.
Councilor O'Malley, yes. Councilor Presley. Councilor Presley, yes. Councilor Ross. Councilor Ross, yes. And Councilor Yancey. Mr. President, we have a unanimous vote.
Twelve in the affirmative, none in the negative. Docket 1794 has received its first reading and is assigned for further action.
Docket number 1541, the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs, to which was referred on November 20 of 2013. Docket number 1541, message and order authorizing the Transportation Department to accept and expend a capital grant of $15,523,700 from the United States Department of Transportation under its Transportation Investment Generating Economic Recovery, known as TIGER Discretionary Grant Program, for the design, construction, and of a pedestrian and bicycle network connecting public transit stations to national park services sites in downtown Boston, Beacon Hill, Childstown, and submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Chair recognizes City Councilor Sal Lamatina on docket 1541.
Thank you, Mr. President. On November 19, we held a committee hearing with representatives from the Boston Transportation Department, Vanit Gump, who's the Director of Planning. This is a great grant that the city of Boston received from the federal government. There were 500 applicants, and we were eight, one of eight, to receive this great grant. Most of its money is going to be spent in my district, soon to be part of your district, but it's 15, over $15 million to build, design and construction of a new pedestrian bicycle network connecting public transit stations to national park service sites in downtown Boston, Beacon Hill, and Childstown. So they're looking at to do some cycle tracks, which I know that this body is in favor of on Commercial Street in the North End and Constitution Road in Childstown, improving pedestrian access to the Black Heritage Trail and Beacon Hill, and also they're looking to do some new signage, to get pedestrian bicyclists to these locations. So I urge my colleagues to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Lamatina, at this time, moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1541. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1541 has passed. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 1808, order that pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 56, residential factor in the city of Boston for the FY 2013 shall be the minimum residential factor as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 58, Section 1A, and be... And be it further, that pursuant to Chapter 403 of the Acts of 2000, a residential exemption in the amount of value equal to 30% of the average assessed value of all Class 1 residential parcels in the city of Boston be and hereby is approved for fiscal year 2014.
Chair recognizes City Councilor Maxiomo on docket 1808.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee on Ways and Means held its hearing this past Monday. This review of the property tax classification and the adoption of the minimum residential factor and owner-occupied exemption is an annual process that we must go through. This is a step before the property tax rate is determined and certified by the Department of Revenue. The city of Boston allows an owner-occupied residential exemption of up to 30%, which is a home rule petition that gives us the option to supersede the statewide 20% exemption. An exemption allows a discount to owner-occupied properties approximately an average of more than $1,700 off the residential property tax bill. The tax classification was adopted in 1978 and implemented in 1979 and provides guidelines for splitting tax levy estimates between residential and business properties. Preferential tax treatment for residential property is not required, but is a local option, therefore, this home rule petition. Tax classes are residential, commercial, industrial, and personal. So, I recommend that we pass this so the residential property owners can get the maximum benefit. Thank you.
Counsel Siomo moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1808. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1808 has passed.
Docket number 1838, order that pursuant to Chapter 59, Section 556, the city of Boston shall extend the property tax exemption of up to 100% for active members of the National Guard or reservists serving in foreign countries for an additional period of two years, beginning in fiscal year 2014.
Chair recognizes Counsel Maxiomo on docket 1838.
Thank you again. We took up this issue also at the same committee hearing on Monday. The National Guard exemption is reviewed every two years. It provides a tax exemption of up to 100% for active National Guard members or reservists serving in this oldest of military branches, reducing the burden on them as they continue their sacrifice for our country. So, once again, I recommend that we pass this as well.
Counsel Siomo is moving acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1838. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1838 has passed.
Docket number 1597, message and order to reduce by $9 million.
Lamatina to the podium.
Thank you. Docket number 1597, message and order to reduce $9,158,530, an appropriation for the Reserve of Collective Bargaining for the purpose of providing funding for the Police Department for FY 14 cost items contained in the arbitration award of the JLMC case number 12-32P on September 27th, 2013, which amends the salary schedule for the Boston Police Patrolmen's Association. Docket number 1598, message and order approving a supplemental appropriation of $16,525,236 for the Boston Police Patrolmen's to cover the cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Boston and the Boston Police Patrolmen's Association contract, JLMC number 12-32P. The contract award provides for an overall salary increase of 25.4% over the six years of the contract that will expire on June 30th, 2016.
The chair recognizes the president. Thank you, Counsel Lamatina. The committee of the whole has had nine hours of hearings on these two particular docket matters, which are emblematic of the arbitration award that the Boston Police Patrolman Association was awarded by an independent arbitrator after going to binding arbitration with the city of Boston back in 20, I think the process started in 2012, but culminated in the spring of this year. I want to thank all the members of the council for their diligence and their key questions and their rolling up their sleeves and really delving into collective bargaining for the second time in four years, which, you know, is not part of our job here, but occasionally we get stuff put on us that doesn't emanate from here. We have to deal with it, and this is one of those cases where we have to deal with something that comes from the other side of the hall and should have been dealt with at a collective bargaining table and wasn't. And hopefully, those days are over with a new administration and a new leader signifying his willingness to get in the room, roll up his sleeves, and do the hard work at the table himself. Hopefully, this is the last time that an arbitration award comes to the city council. I think, once it came, all of us were struck with the fact that Boston, unlike any other city in the Commonwealth or any other major city in the country, does not pay a base salary wage between its firefighters and its police officers that is in parity. Every other Commonwealth city or town, 100, $200 difference between the public safety unions. Every major city in the country, it's similar. Boston, there's a $15,000 difference between Boston's firefighters, which do an invaluable job, and, you know, they're in insurance policy. We don't want, you know, nobody, you don't see the firefighter unless you need him, and when he comes out, you're glad he's there. And they're no different for us. Police officers, a little bit more proactive. They're out, they're in the neighborhoods, they're moving to prevent crime. They're also, when 911 is called, they're reactive as well. But back in 1969, in an arbitration award, Archibald Cox, a name from history, ruled that there should be parity between Boston's police and Boston's fire. And the city and the unions have been acting with parity in mind since 1969. We received this award on October 9th and held our first hearing on it on October 13th, but didn't get the arbitrator's opinion that both Counsel Ross and I, and the city, and the BPPA asked to be delivered us, to us until November 20th. And we all got to read what the arbitrator thought was important. Some people take issue with that. I happen to believe that parity on base wages is a good thing moving forward. I think that we need to, at least for the city of Boston's purposes, say that the government of the city of Boston believes that parity should be on base wages and that, in fact, in fairness to the other unions, the civilian unions that have also settled at 0, 1, 2, 3, 3, and 3, we need to shut the door on these types of leapfrogging awards. And not that this award leapfrogs the police, because at the end of this award, they're still behind the fire department. Even though there's $85 or $87 million, the average patrolman is still a little bit behind the firefighter when this is over. But in the interest of fairness, the city council in 2010 was part of the process that awarded the firefighters their $125 or $119 million five-year deal. This is a six-year deal with worth considerably less, $87 million by the highest count of the city. Sometimes, it started at 80 and it moved to 87. It's somewhere in there. And we all know that, you know, there are things that we're not going to be able to do in our budgets because this money is going, should we agree to fund it. I'm recommending that we do fund it because, in the interest of getting to parity and then closing the door. So, we're saying we're going to fund it, but we're also saying to all parties, don't come back here because we won't be as receptive the next time. We're trying to get you where we believe, in fairness, you should be, where an arbitrator has ruled, but that's it. Because, you know, we've gotten comparisons from people about Boston being Detroit and us going down a slippery slope. I have faith and confidence in the administration of the city, the new administration, and the members of this body that we're not going to follow that. We do have to be careful on the budget busters that continue to grow, and that's why I believe moving forward, that when we have these arbitration awards, they should, in fairness to other unions, come out of the police department's budget or the fire department's budget and not be cast through the entire city budget. Because if you just look at the last three years of overtime of the Boston Police Department, they've overshot overtime by $10 to $15 million every year. And we need to do a better job with our post-audit committee and having them come in here and explain why they blow by that stop sign every year. We give them so much money, and I'm sure that they're probably pretty close in FY 14 to blowing through the $30 million we allocated for FY 14, and it's November or December 3rd or 4th today. So, you know, I stand here recommending that we move forward on this, but recommending we move forward with a message to all of the public safety unions that you've each had your dance. Everybody gets one dance. You've each had your dance. The dances are over. We're not going to go forward from here on. We're not going to mortgage the city anymore. We're trying to get one side to parity. We think it's fair. We think it's workable. We think it's an agreeable arrangement, but not at the behest of everybody else, everybody else. So, thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I hope you'll support the committee of the halls. Thank you. The chair recognizes my good friend from South Boston, Bill Lenihan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I rise. I'm going to be brief. I've said my piece throughout this exercise, and I just want to commend all the participants, both the BPPA and the administration, on their responsiveness to the request by the city council about how forthright the information was and allowing us to make a quality decision here today. I specifically would like to single out our president, who done an extraordinary job on behalf of leading the body to what is a very sensitive issue to many citizens and many residents of Boston, as well as to all of us. So, I just rise to commend him, and I will be voting in affirmation on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lenihan. Chair recognizes Counsel Matt O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to acknowledge Meredith Weenick, our CFO, and her team, Tommy Nie, the president of the Boston Police Patrolmen's Association, and his team. I think all parties involved sought to come up with an agreement that was fair, that was reasonable, and those two notions are not mutually exclusive. When I first heard about this award settlement and I heard the percentage of 25.4%, I thought it was high. My jaw hit the floor. And there was also a dollar figure associated with that in early reports. There was a lot higher than what it turned out to be. So, I, like all of you, did my due diligence. I met with the union leadership. I met with the city CFO and her team, and I consulted with two independent labor attorneys to figure out what was the right cost, what was the right benefit, what is the analysis. And ultimately, I think all parties agree that the cost associated with this was anywhere from $85 to $87 million. So, while the percentage is high, the cost is actually significantly lower than the local 718 firefighters' contract, which was passed by most on this body three or four years ago, and the timeframe is actually longer. And ultimately, that is what has pushed me towards supporting this settlement, this award. What has really sealed the deal, and I mentioned this at our final hearing the other day, is that there's a lot of misunderstanding about this award. I've heard from many constituents, I know you have as well. Some have said, "Vote for this, they deserve it." Others have said, "Don't vote for this, it's too high." We think the police deserve a raise, but we think it should be 15% or 20% or 19%, which was the last best offer from the administration. And this body cannot control that percentage. We can either vote to fund this award, or we can reject this award, in which case, we will go back to the beginning of this process. This is collective bargaining. We would see, I would assume, as all parties have expressed, if we were to not fund this contract, the administration would sit down with the union, and they would try to come up with something. If they were unable to come up with an award, it would then go back to binding arbitration. And what could happen is that another award would come before us that could be higher or lower. There's no way to tell. What I think is a real possibility, should we not fund this contract, is that the percentage in the final negotiated contract would be lower than the 25.4%, but the cost associated would be more, and that would get to retroactive pay or different backend deals. So, I think that it actually is the right move to pass this. I think that we need to have this conversation. I think the parity is key, and what your definition of parity can vary, and we know it does, but we need to make sure that this is done right and this is done well. And ultimately, at its most basic level, this is a higher percentage with a lower cost associated with it over a six-year period, which is longer than what the last major public safety contract that was negotiated back in 2010. And that is why I'll be voting to fund this award. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Chair recognizes Counsel Felix Arroyo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Allow me to begin, President, by thanking you. In the middle of a reelection fight with tremendous pressure from outside organizations and media outlets, you made the very quick decision that you were going to see this process through, allow for all the hearings necessary. And in fact, because of that, we were able to get an arbitrator's opinion in our email inbox before we voted on the issue, and I want to commend you for your willingness to do that. I'm rising today. I stated it before, probably the worst-kept secret in the building, I'm going to be voting for this, for this agreement and for this contract and to fund it for a number of reasons. One, I am proud of the work that myself, Counsel Lamatina, Counsel Ross, and the members of the council who were here present during the firefighters' contract, the role we played in getting to a contract that I thought was fair to firefighters and reasonable to the city. And I see this as very much on par with that contract and creates parity amongst our public safety employees. You know, we say it so often that it comes off as a cliche, but I don't want it to get lost in the truthfulness of the statement that we ask our cops and our firefighters on a daily basis to wake up not knowing if they're coming back home to their family. We ask them of that. Now, thankfully, most of the time, they come back home to their families, but we ask them to be prepared to give up their life for a stranger or for strangers. We have various examples of police officers and firefighters doing that in our city. Others will do that as well, good Samaritans, but we don't ask them to wake up every day with that reality. We do ask that of our public safety personnel, and there's a price to that. Most of us would not choose that work. Are all of our Boston police officers angels? No, just like all of the politicians aren't. But it doesn't mean that most, if not the majority, are not. They work every day, they take care of their families, they want the same things we want for our families, and we have an obligation to treat them fairly, and I think this contract does that. I do want to say a word to someone who's become a friend of mine throughout the years, and that's the president of the Patrolmen's Association, Tommy Nie, who's going through a family tragedy as we speak and has gone through something none of us ever want to imagine for ourselves. But at some level, prove to you what we have in our police force. He hasn't missed a beat, and he's doing what's best for his brothers and sisters on the job and what he thinks is best for the city, and he's sitting with us here today. I don't know if I'd have the courage to do that based on what he's gone through, and I just want him to know, and I want you to know, Mr. Nie, that I appreciate you, what you're going through now, that you'll always be a friend, and I think you're doing the right thing by your members. They're lucky to have you as their president. And I want to thank the city for the work they did. It isn't easy to go through this, and so, I do want to make a statement to Meredith and John Donlop, and the mayor, having gone through this process. Now, it's before us. The decision is ours. I'll be voting yes, and I hope the rest of my colleagues do as well.
Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. Chair recognizes-
Chair recognizes Council Charles Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'll be brief. I am going to vote yes on this contract. I believe that it's unfortunate that I even came to the city council, as you so eloquently stated. But I also rise to support something else that you said, Mr. President, and that is, at long last, we must get overtime under control. You were very accurate when you predicted this year that the police department will overspend its overtime budget again. My prediction is that even though we appropriated $30 million, we're going to spend well over $40 million in fiscal year 14, based on the existing experience. And even though the administration did not give me the level of cooperation I wanted in terms of projecting out the revenue and expenditures, it's clear to me, based on information that we have, that that is in fact going to be the case. So, I rise to say that I will be supporting this contract, but I'm also requesting help from the union and others to get overtime under control at long last. I think if we're able to do that, if we can keep that budget under control year after year after year, then we can recoup some of this expense. And it's a big, this is a big deal. And while it is true the base salary is out of parity with the fire department, we also know that when you include the non-pensionable items, that based on information that each of us received, today, the average income for our police officers is in excess of $109,000 a year, which is similar to the average income of our firefighters when you include details and overtime. But base pay, you're absolutely right, and that's why I'm going to support this. Base pay, there's too much of a disparity there. But I think for us on the city council, our role is a fiduciary one. We have to ask the question, can we afford this expenditure? And it's a qualified yes, very qualified. The administration, based on official communications to us, say, yes, we can afford it. Unofficially, through the media, particularly as articulated by our outgoing mayor, he says we can afford it. So, the administration is telling us two different things. But we know that base pay is not in parity. We know that if we finance this contract, we have to make sacrifices in other areas, including the real possibility that we won't have enough money to bring additional police and fire on to the extent that we would like, not to mention the impact on other departments. But in the context of a very contentious negotiation that resulted in the arbitrator's decision, our choices as a city council is limited. And based on the information that I receive from the administration, as limited as it is, and this body is going to have to do a lot more work in terms of post-audit responsibility and other issues, every quarter, we should receive a report in terms of money coming in and money going out. And I know that does not happen routinely. It does upon request. But routinely, every one of us should know those numbers. That's our job. But I don't think we should penalize the police officers for going through a process that was mutually agreed upon by the administration and the union, both our signatories to the arbitrator's agreement. And we have a special responsibility, maintain our credibility and our integrity, to live up to that, unless it was pretty clear unambiguously that we cannot afford it. But again, we can afford it with real qualifications. That is, if we don't get overtime under control, then we are in for very difficult times in the future. We'll be straddling the next administration. But if we do get overtime under control with the cooperation of the police department, the police officers, as well as the administration, and while I have the floor, I also will request help from the union and others to improve the level of diversity within our police department and fire department. I think that is related to the work that we do here, because to the extent that we have a police department at all levels that's reflective of the makeup of the city of Boston, that actually improves our ability to provide the public safety services that we are obligated to do for everyone in the city of Boston. So, with that said, Mr. President, I inform you that I will support your motion to approve this contract.
Thank you, Council Yancey. Chair recognizes Council Frank Baker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise today to just echo some different comments that came up. Council Ross had made the point in our last hearing that it was on the administration to prove to us that we could not afford this contract. Although 25% is high, they did not make a good point there in proving that. And to echo a point of Council Arroyo, how much is enough to ask someone to go out every night, possibly not come home to their family? I know there isn't enough money in the world for me not to come home to my family, and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Baker. Chair recognizes Council Mark Ciomo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me first thank you for allowing us the time to get all the information, to make an informed decision here. And, you know, I harken back, I was here with the firefighters' contract, which is arbitrator Ison decided that parity included details in overtime. And now, we have an award before us where the arbitrator buckalo says that it should be base wages. So, with that disparity, I had to look within and say, what do I think parity is? And I think parity is base wages. And, you know, getting all the information that we got, after five years with this contract, a police officer with a master's degree still will not make what a firefighter makes, a fifth-year firefighter makes. So, then they said, well, they sold that out because they took Quinn. They took their zeros in Quinn. But that's a master's degree. That's what we want. We want an educated police force. And so, a master's degree doesn't even get them up to the firefighters. And I brought up the issue of overtime at yesterday's hearing as chairman of Ways and Means, past five years. And I do, I struggle with this because I know how difficult it's been for all of us. You take from one part, you're going to take away from another. You give to one, you take away from another. But at the end of the day, I had to see and inwardly think what to get to where I am, which is yes, by the way, that our police officers are still not at the same rate as our firefighters. And overtime, I think in FY08, the police department spent $60 million of the $30 million budgeted. It's gone down significantly since then, but it's still 50% more every year. It's at least $45 million, and we continue to budget 30. If we save $15 million a year for the next six years on overtime, that pays for this whole contract. So, that's how I've come to my decision. So, I will be voting in the affirmative.
Thank you, Council Ciomo. Chair recognizes Council Sal Lamatina.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Monday, I mentioned that I would vote my conscience. And for me, it's very simple. When you look at the numbers on the base wage, I truly believe it's not fair that our police officers are getting less than our firefighters. And if we could do something, I wish we could just make them at parity. And as I said before, after that, enough is enough. We're all city of Boston employees, and after that, we all should get the same raises. So, I'm voting, I think that our firefighters, like I said to you many times, I love our police officers. I think they do a really great job. I'm proud of our police officers, but they work. I mean, you look at the overtime, they get to work, and they're out there in the street. And you look at the details. I mean, they have to work all those details to get the money, to get what the firefighters are getting. So, I'm voting yes on this, and I urge my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lamatina. She recognizes Council Anna Presley.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I just want to acknowledge that, you know, I do get it for those that are watching at home. This is a large award, and it is hard to digest. You know, it was for me at the beginning of this process. It's hard to digest, especially for the many residents of this city who are barely making ends, me, who work at non-union jobs in the private sector and haven't seen a raise in years, or for our other hard-working public civilian unions who, year after year, accept lower annual raises. Unfortunately, as a city councillor, it is not within my authority or my power to address those issues, as frustrating as that is. The reality is, voting this contract down doesn't solve those challenges. And more importantly, I don't want to, and I won't support, a race to the bottom. So, although it is not within my power as a city councillor to address these challenges, it is within my power to be an advocate. And as an advocate, I am urging Maryleke Walsh and the next administration to take the lessons we've learned during this round of bargaining and implement systemic changes that address those challenges. I urge them to work cooperatively with our public safety unions outside of individual contract negotiations, to develop an agreement that is on parity, to remove the automatic TCAP raise in the firefighters' contract, and to develop some parameters for annual raises that put all of our public employees on fair ground and moves away from this annual raise disparity. Today, I plan to vote in support of this award. My role is to determine whether the city of Boston should fund this award, to ask, can we effectively pay for the balance of the contract handed down in binding arbitration? I have many ideas about how we should improve the process and the system, but that was not the decision before me, before us today. Now, the city negotiators argue that this is a hefty raise, and it is, but it is within the city budget to fulfill its obligation. The arbitration process was entered into in good faith by both parties. They agreed to accept the decision handed down by the arbitrator. And at no point during the process did the administration make a case that the city cannot afford the contract. Had they done so, perhaps the arbitrator would have come to a different decision. We have the greatest police force in the nation. They are overworked and making sacrifices that none of us can fully appreciate, great personal sacrifices, to keep us safe. And recent events have only exacerbated the demands we place on them and their families. I support the president's motion to approve this contract. This award is fair and long overdue. The brave men and women of our police force have been valiantly serving the city of Boston, demoralized, working without a contract for the last three years. This award is fair and long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Presley. Chair recognizes Council Tito Jackson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I was not on the body when the fire contract was voted upon. On the record, Mr. President, I was not here. But $105 million over the course of five years, and what we have in front of us is $87 million over the course of six years. This is a contract that an arbitration costs the city $400,000 already. And I guess what we have before us is a choice between $87 million or X. And we just had an education conversation. We don't know what X is. We don't know if Maryleke Walsh would get a better deal or the next arbiter would give us a better deal. We don't know that, Mr. President. We have no guarantees when it comes to the dollars that would make sense for this. This is a broken process, and that's why we are here today. And we are here today, Mr. President, to determine, as many of my colleagues before me noted, whether or not we can afford this. We do not have the latitude to make the changes in that process at this point. Hopefully, in the future, we will make those changes, and if it comes down to us making changes to the very charter of this body, that may be what we may need to do. So, we are not faced with this. I believe that we are moving towards, and we get to that issue of parity when it comes to this contract, Mr. President. And in the future, as you noted, that these unions that come before us, that do the work of the city, will be on parity, and the raises that we see in the future will be more in parity with the raises that we see for other labor unions. And it is very important that we get to that point and that we are not in this situation in the future. So, today, Mr. President, I will be voting in favor.
Thank you, Council Jackson. Question now comes on acceptance of the committee report and passage of Doc at 1597. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Counselor O'Malley doubts the vote. Clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Ciomo.
Yes.
Counselor Ciomo, yes. Counselor Conley. Counselor Consalvo.
Yes.
Counselor Consalvo, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina.
Yes.
Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Ross. Counselor Ross, yes. And Counsel Yancey. Counsel Yancey, yes. We have a unanimous vote.
12 in the affirmative, none in the negative. Doc at 1597 passes. Question now comes on Doc at 1598. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Counsel O'Malley doubts the vote. Clerk will call a roll on Doc at 1598.
Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Ciomo. Counsel Ciomo, yes. Counsel Conley. Counsel Consalvo. Counsel Consalvo, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina.
Yes.
Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan.
Yes.
Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Ross. Counsel Ross, yes. And Counsel Yancey. Counsel Yancey, yes. We have a 12-0 unanimous vote.
Well, have the affirmative, none in the negative. Doc at 1598 passes unanimously. Congratulations, President Nie and members of the BPPA. Madam Clerk, Doc at 1218.
Doc at 1218, order for hearing regarding the city regulations of parking throughout our neighborhoods and on new and redeveloped property in the city of Boston.
Doc at 1218 remains in the Committee of City and Neighborhood Services. motions, orders, and resolutions.
Doc at number 1850, Counsel Lamatina offered the following order for hearing to examine the impact that trash placement and collection services has on the city of Boston.
Chair recognizes City Councilor Sal Lamatina on Doc at 1850.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we add Counsel Bill Linehan's name on this docket.
Madam Clerk, please add the name of Counselor Bill Linehan on Doc at 1850. Uh, Mr. -- Counsel Lamatina, you have the floor.
Thank you. Mr. President, as you know, I've been working on this trash issue now since I've been elected as this council for seven years. And the contract is absolutely, is going out to bid in January. And downtown neighborhoods, particularly the North End, South End, Chinatown, Beacon Hill, they have their trash is out there, picked up two or three times a week. And presently, the trash is put out, you can put out your trash at 5:00 PM the night before, and it's picked up at 7:00 in the morning. And what's happening in our neighborhoods between 5:00 PM and 7:00 AM, a lot of people go through the trash, they rip open bags and litters our streets. But we also have a problem with rodents in our downtown neighborhoods. So, what I want to do is have a hearing, bring in the commissioner, bring in some residents. And we had a hearing on the contract, and there were a lot of residents and groups from the downtown neighborhoods that came, they had the same concerns. So, what we're looking to do is maybe, as a pilot program in downtown neighborhoods, is put out the trash at 6:00 in the morning, 6:00 AM in the morning, but pick up at 9:00 AM, which means the trash is only out there for three hours a day. We are today AM, which means the trash is only out there for three hours a day, where today, the trash is out there for 14 hours a day. So I really believe that this is going to make a big difference in our neighborhoods. So I'm looking to have this hearing, and I appreciate whoever wants to sign on and to attend, to attend.
Madam Clerk, please add my name to Doc. 1850. Chair recognizes Counsel Charles Yancey.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to commend the maker of this order and would like to have my name added. For the areas I represent, Mr. President, we've had a problem, not a overwhelming problem, but a problem with pickup in the late evening, which I don't think is appropriate. So I will be raising that issue at this particular hearing, particularly many sections of Mayor Penn that at one time used to receive morning pickups. Now they have to wait until 4:00, 5:00 in the afternoon, sometimes even later, which I don't think is reasonable. So I look forward to this hearing again. I'd like to have my name added, and I commend the maker.
Thank you, Counsel Yancey. Chair recognizes Counsel Bill Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I rise, I want to thank the good councillor from East Boston for his allowing me to be a co-sponsor on this. Many of the neighborhoods that are in question are in my district. And this is something that, in the downtown neighborhoods, you hear on a regular basis. There's many issues related to it. Once that, if you're putting the trash out only once a week, like, which happens in South Boston, then there's less of a chance of it ending up on the street just once a week. If you do it two and three times a week, then it's constantly going to be in the neighborhoods, creating all the issues that Counsel La Matina articulated. Also, in this discussion, there's the opportunity to talk about, even if you get pickup two or three times a week, you still only get recycling once a week. And that causes for an issue also. There's real issues with density. I think the time change, and maybe there can be a switch in different neighborhoods, like, one neighborhood would get it at 7:00 and another at 9:00. And then others may want it to have it out later. But I think that to have a hearing and to push this matter is appropriate, and I want to commend the Gotham. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Linehan. Chair recognizes Counsel Tito Jackson.
Mr. President, I have a radical, very, very radical suggestion, which is that trash go into trash cans, Mr. President. I think one of the things that would prevent a lot of what we're talking about, and has been explored in other municipalities, is that trash actually go into trash cans. And I have folks who come in my neighborhood on a regular basis, and although they do go into the bags, they actually are in trash cans. I do realize that there are certain neighborhoods where that is an issue, but I think it is something that we can begin to think of. I think, and I don't know what it's like in other folks' neighborhoods. We also have, I now have possums, and I live in Roxbury, but I have possums, I have raccoons, and I have other wild animals in our neighborhood. So I think the use of trash cans, or possibly the mandated use of trash cans, would be something that would help with this problem. So I would like my name to be added, and I think it's something that we should explore.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson, for that radical idea. Please add the name of Counsel Tito Jackson. Also, please add the name of Counselor Mark Siomo on Doc. 1850. And Chair recognizes...
No, no, I just want my name.
Please add the name of Counsel Diana Presley and Counselor Matt O'Malley. Doc. 1850 will be referred to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services for action. Madam Clerk, personnel orders, could you read them by Counselor, I guess by...
Doc. 1851, Counsel Murphy for Counsel Consalvo offered the following order for the appointment of temporary employee Brian J. Glora in the City Council effective December 7, 2013. Doc. 1852, Counsel Murphy for Counsel Consalvo offered the following order for the appointment of temporary employee Brian J. Glora in City Council effective December 14, 2013. Doc. 1853, Counsel Murphy for Counsel Consalvo offered the following order for the appointment of temporary employees Elizabeth A. Blasi, Brian Clinton, and David F. Vitarene in the City Council effective December 7, 2013. Doc. 1854, Counsel Murphy for Counsel Consalvo offered the following order for the appointment, excuse me, of temporary employee Elizabeth A. Blasi, Brian Clinton, and David Vitarene in City Council effective December 14, 2013.
Counsel Consalvo moves suspension of the rules and passage of Doc. 1851, 1852, 1853, and 1854. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Doc. 1851 through 1854 have passed.
Doc. 1855, Counsel Murphy for Counsel Baker offered the following order for the appointment of temporary employees Jill Baker, Amanda Curly, Emma Frigaletti, Joseph McEckren, Allison Quinn in the City Council effective December 7, 2013. Doc. 1856, Counsel Murphy for Counsel Baker offered the following order for the appointment of temporary employees Jill Baker, Amanda Curly, Amy Frigaletti, Joseph McEckren, and Allison Quinn in City Council effective December 14, 2013.
Counsel Baker moves suspension of the rules and passage of Doc. 1855 and 1856. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Doc. 1855 and 1856 have passed.
Doc. 1857, Counsel Murphy for Counsel Siomo offered the following order for the appointment of temporary employees Alexander J. Chase, Jaclyn Franks, Mark Hanley, Deborah O'Leary, and Joseph T. Walsh in City Council effective December 7, 2013. Doc. 1858, Counsel Murphy for Counsel Siomo offered the following order for the appointment of temporary employees Alexander J. Chase, Jaclyn Franks, Mark Hanley, Deborah O'Leary, and Joseph T. Walsh in City Council effective December 14, 2013.
Counsel Siomo moves suspension of the rules and passage of Doc. 1857 and 1858. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Doc. 1857 and 1858 have passed.
Doc. 1859, Counsel Murphy for Counsel Yancey offered the following order for the appointment of temporary employees Lynette M. Frazier, Alice Wagon, Idoo, Jeanette Orgel, and Nichelle Nicole Purvis, and Kenneth W. Yarborough in City Council effective December 7, 2013. Doc. 1860, Counsel Murphy for Counsel Yancey offered the following order for the temporary employment of employees Lynette M. Frazier, Alice Wagon, Idoo, Jeanette Orgel, Nichelle Nicole Purvis, and Kenneth W. Yarborough in City Council effective December 14, 2013.
Counsel Yancey moves suspension of the rules and passage of Doc. 1859 and 1860. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Doc. 1859 and 1860 have passed.
Doc. 1861, Counsel Murphy for Counsel Ross offered the following order for the appointment of temporary employees Sarah Hinton, Lisbert J. Sina, and Michelle Snyder in City Council effective December 7, 2013. Doc. 1862, Counsel Murphy for Counsel Ross offered the following order for the appointment of temporary employees Sarah Hinton, Lisbert Sina, and Michelle L. Snyder in City Council effective December 14, 2013.
Counsel Ross moves suspension of the rules and passage of Doc. 1861 and 1862. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Doc. 1861 and 1862 have passed. The clerk informs me there are four late-file matters in her hands, which in absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added, the clerk will read the first addition to the agenda.
A letter from Counsel Conley to Council President Stephen J. Murphy. Dear Council President Murphy, I regret that I am unable to attend today's City Council meeting due to a scheduling conflict. I will have staff present who will brief me fully, and I will review the record of the meeting. Thank you sincerely, John R. Conley, Boston City Council Lodge, Chair of Committee on Education.
Counsel Conley's record will be placed on file. The other late-file matters are all personnel in nature. The clerk will read the first.
Counsel Stephen J. Murphy ordered that effective November 30, 2013, the following named persons be and hereby is appointed to the position set against your name until Friday, March 21, 2013. Do you want me to read all of them?
You could read the roll call there.
Okay. Ron Cobb, Daisy De La Rosa, Carrie Jordan, Cora Montron, Michael Nichols, Christine O'Donnell, Lorraine Shinido, and Kathleen Sullivan.
That matter will be placed on file.
Counsel Murphy for Counsel Arroyo, effective that Saturday, December 7, 2013, the following named person be and hereby is appointed to the position set against your name until Friday, December 13, 2013. Rebecca Arrellano, Jocelyn De Pina, Heather Perez, and Rui Santos.
And the other?
And the other is Stephen J. Murphy for Counsel Arroyo, ordered that effective December 14, 2013, the following named person be and hereby is appointed to the position set against your name until Friday, January 3, 2014. And again, same, Rebecca Arrellano, Jocelyn De Pina, Heather Perez, and Rui Santos.
Counsel Arroyo moves suspension of the rules and passage of the third and fourth late-file matter, which are personnel in nature. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. The third and fourth late-file matters are passed. The chair has a question of the clerk. The chair was in error on the third late-file matter, which involves central staff. Counsel La Matina moves suspension of the rules and passage of the third late-file matter. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The third late-file, the second late-file matter has passed. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Seeing and hearing no takers. Chair recognizes Counsel Diana Presley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unanimous consent to make an announcement?
Counsel Presley requests unanimous consent. Please proceed, Counsel Presley.
All right. Well, you know, in the wake of Thanksgiving, where most, all or most of us overindulged, I thought I would share with you an update and an announcement on the taste revolution that I partnered with Future Boston on. As you know, I'm very passionate about the transformative role that restaurants play in our communities, which is why I've been pushing for liquor license reform. And we launched an online contest to name the transformative restaurant of 2013. It was a competitive process. I know all of you would swear in your districts and your neighborhoods that you boast the best restaurants, but I wanted to let you know who won and who were the top three. So Steve's Kitchen, Counsel Siomo, won the transformative restaurant of the year award. They came in first. Close behind, Counsel Jackson, was Haley House. And in third place, and in third place, Counsel Arroyo and Counsel O'Malley, El Oriental de Cuba, in Jamaica Plain. And so Steve's Kitchen, Haley House, and El Oriental de Cuba. And now, just to shift gears, I do have one more, not, I wanted to make an announcement and a statement. And the statement is much serious, more serious in tone and in nature. We did not have an opportunity as a body to acknowledge World AIDS Day. And so I did just want to take a moment to acknowledge, which was nationally observed on December 1st, I want to get it right, December 1st. We do have some 5,000-plus individuals in the City of Boston that are living with HIV and AIDS, 18,000-plus that are living with HIV and AIDS in our Commonwealth. World AIDS Day is about us acknowledging those who are living with HIV and AIDS and their family members, and also to commemorate and acknowledge those that we've lost to this disease. You know, during the hearing that Counsel Ross chaired about our LGBT seniors, many of whom are re-closeting, it really did elucidate all of us to the fact that so many of those living with HIV and AIDS continue to be stigmatized and to feel isolated and discriminated against in our society. So I did just want to let all of them know that we had not forgotten about them. And so, you know, I hope you all join me in some way in acknowledging those very, our constituents, our loved ones, our family members, our neighbors who are living with this disease. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. The chair also wants to acknowledge receipt of a flyer from the Mass Coalition to prevent gun violence, that on Saturday, December 14, 2013, there will be a rally and commemorative gathering at the Boston Common, the Parkman Bandstand, entitled "Boston Remembers Newtown" and the Sandy Hook Tragedy that took place a little over a year ago. There is a rally from 1:30 to 3:30 at the Parkman Bandstand, and a walk from 3:30 to 4:00 along Boylston Street towards Copley Square, right onto Dartmouth, right onto Marlboro, ending at the First Church of Boston, where there will be a candlelight vigil at 4:30 at the First Church of Boston, 66 Marlboro Streets. I wanted to make all councilors and anybody else interested in attending aware of the commemorative walk and candlelight vigil and service on Saturday, the 14th of December, from 1:30 to 4:30, "Boston Remembers Newtown and the Sandy Hook Tragedy of a Year Ago." There are two late-file matters, which in absence of objection, will be added to today's consent agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added. The chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The consent agenda is adopted. I could ask all councilors and all guests to please rise at this time, as the council prepares to adjourn. The council will adjourn the meeting of December 4, 2013, for the following individuals. For Counsel Consalvo and the chair, Lawrence R. Larry Kenny. For Counsel Yancey, Yvonne Brown. Andrew McGee. Dean Yarborough, Ken Yarborough's father. Herman Wells. Brianna Rosales. And Reverend Herschel Lanston. For Counselors Yancey and Conley, Quadwo Michael Thompson. For Counselor Linehan, Teresa M. Miller. For Counselor Baker, Jimmy O'Malley. And Margaret Margie Baker. And for the chair, for all members of the City Council, Joseph Nie, the son of Tom Nie from the BPPA, who passed away tragically just before Thanksgiving. I'd ask for a moment of silence for all of those involved. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it will do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals, and is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, December 11, 2013, at 12:00 noon. All in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Aye. Council stands adjourned.